Hello, I'd like to call to order and if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Natty, if we could please get the roll.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
A Samurai?
Here.
Larkin? Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Next is our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive, small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Okay, the next item is the agenda, approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are the announcements. August 15th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM will be the School Board Listening Session here in the Family Center. August 15th, Tuesday, 5:30 PM, the School Board Work Session here also in the Community Room. April 22nd, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, we'll have the regular School Board Meeting also here in the Community Room. And on September 4th, Monday, the District Office is closed for Labor Day. September 5th will be the first day for students. Next, correspondence. Superintendent, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Madam Chair and members, we have no correspondence this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is communication to the Board. Citizens at this time can come forward and... Sorry, I'm kind of missing my space here. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Does anybody have anything to bring forward to the Board? Okay, seeing none, let's move on. The next is our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the June 13th and 27th School Board Meetings and June 20th Work Session, the Personnel Report, and the Treasurers Report for May and June of 2017. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next are the discussion reports, information items, and this is where it reports from the members of the Board. Board members will report on Board activities since the last scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Holla, would you like to go first?
Sure. It's been a nice relaxing summer and I got to connect with a lot of community members and constituents over coffee and meals and phone calls, so that's been great.
Thank you. Natty?
I would say my report is very similar. It's been a fun summer and been able to participate in a lot of different community activities over the last couple of months, hard to kind of remember all of them, but also been able to talk with a lot of people in the community. Been excited to hear about the new school year starting.
Thank you. Molly?
Yeah, same thing. Lots of conversations with parents, community members. Really nice national night out, just a lot of events going on in the community, so that's it.
Lorian?
Yeah, I too spent some time really connecting with some of our community members and constituents and listening to some parent concerns. I also had the opportunity to watch two of our recent graduates in a production at the Performing Institute in Minnesota down in Eden Prairie. Two of our graduates were in the production of Spring Awakening this summer, so it was really fun to see them perform.
Thank you. Well, I attended a couple of 9-16 Board Meetings. One was the contract negotiations with the superintendent. And then we had our last Board Meeting just this past week over here at the New Pancalo Education Center. It looks very nice. They took a lot of the things that they had learned from Carner Blue and they implemented them over there, and it's a very nice community. And I look forward to getting over there when the kids get into class. They already had 86 students that were enrolled at our last Board Meeting and they haven't even started with a lot of the referrals yet, so it's very exciting. It's great when they fill up right away because it makes it more cost-effective for all of us and it should actually open up some spaces over at Carner Blue. We also got an update on the Quora Education Center where the old Capitol View building was. And they are working on it and they've had a little bit of flooding, so it probably is going to be a little bit behind schedule. They were on schedule as of our last Board Meeting, but then we had two days of rain, so they believe we're going to be a little bit behind, but we're on budget and on target. So I think... Oh, and I just attended the Chair Meeting prior to this. Superintendent Kathy Kelly, do you have a report this evening?
Madam Chair and I have agreed that I will defer my report because I have been busy in August and I'm sure you don't want to stay and hear all about that, but there'll be juicy tidbits in my Superintendent's Update, and I've missed you all, welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is our legislative update. The Board will be presented with information on the past legislative session, and we have Senator Carolyn Lane and Representative Connie Bernardi. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us here, and actually I'm glad that Connie called in to set this up and I'm glad that you welcomed us to this Board Meeting. And Connie will give an overview and then I have some details. So Connie?
Okay, well, thank you for having me here. And the makeup of the Board just looks so different and it's like women power up here, I think, and I had to say. And Chair Larkin, right? We miss him, and so I wish he was here tonight as well. So welcome. I feel like, since I'm new to being here, since you've been here, I feel like welcome to the school district, so thank you for having us come. The legislative session, you probably got a lot of updates from your organization and those sorts of things. I'll just give you a brief perspective. I felt it was kind of a mixed bag this year, some good things, some not-so-good things there. You know, the legislature started out with some really different priorities and what people's values were at the legislature. And I would say the legislative majorities, which were new this year, focused on... Well, not that it all happened, but on transportation and tax cuts. And I know the Governor wanted to invest in a lot in education. So over as the time went on, I feel like we actually did make a difference. I'm a huge education supporter and it's been fun to be a part of helping the Columbia Heights School District and showcasing the great things that are happening with our young scholars here and the great things in the innovation and leaders you've been in early childhood education as well as making... Well, letting the whole state know that all-day kindergarten is essential. So I think Superintendent Kelly made that very clear in all her testimony at the Capitol. And we did get funding that year, which you already did that and already valued that, but it was a nice bonus to be able to have that funding to actually support that work that you guys valued. And that's basically... We did fight for that this year to make sure that funding wasn't taken away because it actually was proposed that that funding would not be there for voluntary all-day kindergarten. So in the end, I think that we did make a difference when the proposals, like collective proposal was like less than 1% for the school districts to get. We ended up, and when you put it all together, it's barely keeping up. And it does mean that you could... And I apologize for this, that you probably have to do, really do maybe some creative accounting and figuring out how you can make the budget work because there was a 1.7% increase. And I don't know if people always realize, I know you know this, but your budget is made up of salaries and of paying people, like 85%, I don't know, is usually what I hear from schools, or 80%. And so there's the cost of living increases that you need to keep up with. And the next year, it was a total of 3.4% increase. And so that was, you know, it was probably about 50 cents to... 50% to twice as much as that was expected to get at the beginning of session, so I feel like we did make somewhat of a difference. And the one thing I wanted to point out that happened in the other areas regarding the tax cuts and the transportation, because it does impact education. I wasn't happy with giving the top 1,100 wealthiest Minnesotans a tax cut for their estates. I would have rather invested that in early childhood education or help relieve student debt. So I had different priorities in where we spent those tax cuts. And so that does impact people's education when we make those decisions to spend state budget because it is state spending on giving people tax cuts that are the wealthiest Minnesotans and as opposed to investing that in our youngest learners and our students and scholars, as we call them here at Columbia Heights. And then the other area is transportation. And the reason why that will or could impact education in the future is because about half of the need for education, I mean for transportation that was asked for or that was needed to meet our infrastructure needs was provided in funding, but it was not dedicated, long-term, sustainable funding. So what that means is in the next biennium, that money could disappear if there's not a surplus or we can't, we have a budget shortfall. It could just disappear, and so we're not even meeting our transportation needs. Or the other option is, it's coming now out of general... This money is mostly coming out of the General Fund, which is where we fund our schools, our nursing homes, our healthcare. And so I just don't like pitting education priorities against transportation priorities. Transportation has about, somewhere around six, seven dedicated funding sources outside of the General Fund, so I'm very much of a proponent. Let's use those dedicated, long-term, sustainable funding sources. And if they need to be increased, that's one option. But I don't really believe in taking it out of the funds of the General Fund that funds our education. So that's where... Just be wary and be alert that that could impact education in the future. So thank you.
And I'm going to touch into some things having to do with education. So as you know, you have an additional 2% each year to funding. It's 121 in the fiscal year '18 per pupil unit and 124 in fiscal year '19. But I know as well as you know that that's barely enough to do inflation and your overall needs, so I'm glad that it happened, but it's not really paying attention to the full needs, especially when you consider the special ed cross-subsidy that eats into your basic general education funding. You probably have somewhere in the vicinity of 40% of your special ed costs having to come out of the General Fund, something like that. And also, there's no additional funding for counselors or other support staff, something that's increasingly important and that I certainly support. And then in the early learning area, it was rather poorly, in my opinion, handled this session. There's an increase of $21 million for early learning scholarships, but not for the pathway to funding that would go to the schools. That funding is frozen for 2017. And then I have a concern that the funding that is provided to private providers in this program will not be tied to the parent-aware requirements for quality until 2020. It's put off. We have been careful to tie funding in early quality programs to tie to quality. And when you don't do that, then you're not really taking fiduciary responsibility for taxpayers' funds. So that's something that we need to look at. And no more funding was put into the voluntary pre-K programs that you have done since its start, but a new pilot program was funded at $50 million called School Readiness. The district must choose between School Readiness or the voluntary pre-K programs. And it's just, I consider it a diffusion of the funding rather than sticking to something that has a need and continuing to cover it. So it lessens the overall effectiveness and I don't think it was the best choice of the funding. The requirement the districts offer, the ACT or the SAT, to all students is removed so that funding... But so is the funding that's reimbursed to the district, except that you'll get funding for students that are tied into free and reduced lunch. And a positive for students and parents is that the schools can still offer the tests during the school day and at school sites, but it won't be total reimbursement. A big change in education is the four-tier licensure system that will now be under a new professional educator licensing and standards board. This will give you as a School Board more flexibility in filling hard-to-fill teaching positions. People can be hired without the standard teaching licensure, at least in the beginning. And there are a number of rules that go with this flexible licensure, but when I sat where you sit now, I was, I very much appreciated my favorite Superintendent at that time, Dr. Baylor, who Kathy Kelly knows well, saying that you must always hire the very best. If you're going to look at these teachers for several decades down the way, the only way to have quality then is to have quality at the beginning. So always hire and retain quality teachers above all else, not cheaper or... We got to feel this somehow, but always strive for the quality. That's, I certainly believe in that. There are also big changes made in teacher layoff rules. The School Board and the teacher union must negotiate about layoffs, but you do not automatically depend on the seniority of the teacher. I think this will be a difficult negotiation and I hope you can find a way to work it without greater time and money spent on your negotiations because the law doesn't give you much direction or help in this. But it does give that a change. So pensions is an unfinished area. We must attend to this at some point because we'll only get ourselves deeper into problems if we don't continually address the pensions in such as teachers' funds. And besides these teacher points, I'll just say that Real ID passed and you'll be able to get on planes. You'll be able to get your new licenses in October of 2018. In the meantime, your regular license that we have now will be accepted. So then social security, another point there is that I always was in agreement of raising the cap on where the cutoff was as to when social security is taxed. And they did that, which is very fine, but now they're wanting to continue it all the way till there is no more taxing on any social security. And I don't consider, I don't agree with that because if you have a great deal of funds and social security is only a piece of your income, then please, it is a huge cost to the state to not have taxes on that piece of your income. So I believe in raising that cap as we did, but I don't agree with continuing on the way out, all the way out. And then my last comment is, the Capitol is gorgeous. It has been refurbished, renewed after 100-plus years. It is beautiful. The artwork has been cleaned up, which was a very, very tedious and difficult task, and it, as we say, pops. It's very brilliant. The whole place is gorgeous. It is made back to what I call the people's house. I said before, when you had the Senate totally in the Capitol, the Capitol was never designed to be an office building. And when you saw a Xerox machine underneath a marble staircase, you knew you were misusing the place. Now it's renewed to the people's house and it's beautiful. So this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, try to make a trip down there, see what's going on. All kinds of great activities, kids included. Great opportunity to just go and see the place, tours all the time. Run down there and have a look, it's beautiful. And if you don't make it this weekend and want to go some other time, let me or Connie know. We'll get you a tour. We'll take you around. So that's my report, thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I think just a general question that keeps coming up, and I'm not sure who mentioned the special ed cross-subsidy, but can you just give us a report on even the conversation revolving around that? Because that has been big to watch that escalate, even in my short time on this Board. So what's the conversation looked like?
It is pretty well ignored.
Okay.
At the state and federal level, it is not addressed because it's a huge cost. And as long as something is working, nobody's going to step in to try to fix it. You need to make a lot of noise about it to make some change. It is a serious issue and it's not being attended to. The costs increase. At the same time, the funding does not support that and that's serious. So we need to hear from you.
So not working equals not noisy at the Capitol, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, noise helps a lot.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for coming in and giving us this update. We really appreciate whenever having you come to the Board, and we welcome back anytime.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'd like to visit before next session if you'd like to or at the beginning of session, seeing how things are starting to lay out. I'd like to know what your agenda is and how we can be of help specifically to Columbia Heights School District. And then also, the ribbon cutting actually is at 9:00 Friday morning on the south steps of the Capitol. After that, in my office, I have my coffee and cookies and people are welcome to come and check it out, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Okay, next on the agenda, we will get some information about our opening week activities. Zena Stenvik? Thank you.
Vice Chair Palmer, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. I'm here this evening to present information on our back-to-school activities. So of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And the core values that we'll be focusing on with this presentation are community, excellence, collaboration, and respect. So again, this is informational presentation without a governance question. I won't be bringing it back for governance. Here you can see a calendar of events that's coming up. We're gearing up and very excited to welcome our new teachers and staff for our three-day, what we call Scaling the Heights Induction Program. So the new staff take a tour of the community and meet some of our community members on the first day, along with other meetings, and then work with districts and programs, district programs and departments. And each new teacher gets a mentor and they work with them on that Friday. I'll go into more detail in a minute. Then you can see the second week, which we call our Welcome Back Week. That's when all of our staff return. And the first day's a little bit different this year. Our first day altogether, the teachers and staff are going to start off in their buildings, you know, kind of creating that building community. And then everyone will meet together Tuesday and Wednesday as a district, so that's where we provide professional development. And our very exciting kickoff, which is the Convocation. So if you've not had the opportunity to be part of the Convocation, we're looking forward to having you there this year. And then the Thursday and Friday before the young scholars come back to school, teachers will be busy, busy in their classrooms, getting that ready on the 31st and the 1st of September. So just some details on Scaling the Heights. Again, that's our new staff induction program. On the first day on that Wednesday, we welcome the teachers and staff, bus tour. We stop at Mersion Hall and have a wonderful lunch. The next day, a lot of work on curriculum, student services, many of the different departments. It's lots of nuts and bolts on that day. There are always a lot of questions from our brand-new teachers. You know, it's their first job out of college about benefits. You know, they're off of their parents' medical benefits at that point and they have lots of questions for Director Holmgren. And then the local 710 teacher union sponsors the lunch. And then the last day on Friday is largely spent on mentoring. So this is where teachers really get to, a lot of their questions answered and get to dive into that curriculum. They get their passwords and their devices as well. Important. Our district in service this year on August 29th, we're continuing our focus on college and career readiness, our life skills, and closing the achievement gap. So we're not wavering or changing our main vision of what we're working towards. We will be offering many different professional development opportunities for our staff. Teachers who need to renew their license within that five-year time period here in our district, they never have to go elsewhere. We always, within that five-year time period, provide them with sufficient clock-hour times with all of the different requirements. Here you can see some of the areas of focus for their Welcome Back Week professional development, tech integration, our new kindergarten and first-grade literacy curriculum. So we'll have the professional trainers out working with our teachers then. We're going to have a major focus on aligning curriculum, aligning instruction, both at the same grade level and vertically as well, from one grade level to the next. We're really going to focus in on the systems of our instruction and our strategies this year and our curriculum. One of the new requirements for teacher re-licensure is suicide prevention. We're adding that as well, very important topic and awareness. Of course, all five of our schools have AVID and we always incorporate AVID strategies. We always offer specific sessions for teachers of English learners and teachers of students with special needs. But then also for those same topics for teachers where that's not their area of expertise, we want all of our staff to be aware of all of the needs. And our Heighten the Arts Committee will be doing a lot of planning work and following up with their plans. Convocation, as I mentioned, is on Wednesday, August 30th. That's in the Performing Arts Center, which is located in our high school. After the exciting Convocation, we walk across the street to Kodiak Park for a wonderful picnic. And then afterwards, we have other professional development sessions offered. Also in Back-to-School Week, we have open houses. So these are listed on our district calendar as well. August 29th, Columbia Academy, Columbia Heights High School for upper-grade level students. They can come in and pick up their schedule and pieces like that. On August 31st, pre-K through grade five across the district. And then the high school, again, for our incoming ninth graders, they get their special welcome and open house. So a special invitation, reaching out to Board members, please join us if you're able to on your busy calendars. We would love to have you welcome on the first day of Scaling the Heights. Welcome our new staff and introduce yourselves, and they can introduce themselves. And then also the Convocation and the picnic on Wednesday, August 30th. So if there's any questions? Thank you. Anybody?
Sounds fun.
Doesn't it? Thank you very much. It looks like well-planned, as always, and it is always a good time. It's very exciting. How many new teachers and staff are we getting this year?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't have the number off the top of my head right now, but I'll put it in the update.
That sounds like fun, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is a report on academic return on investment with Brian Hennickins and also Teaching and Learning.
Vice Chair Palmer, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. Director Hennickins and I are here to present our findings on the academic return on investment. So of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation focuses on excellence and integrity. There will be no governance question along with this presentation. It's an informational item for the School Board. So the program that we want to present is Check and Connect. We have had Check and Connect in grades six through eight in this district for a number of years, and so it's always important to take a look and analyze different programs, big or small. This is really, Director Hennickins and I are here presenting, but this is really a part of a larger team effort. So staff, including middle school staff, high school staff, administration, district center folks, were all trained on the academic return on investment framework and had a hand in conducting this analysis. So just some background on Check and Connect. The purpose of the program, it's an intervention for students who are both showing warning signs of disengagement with school and who are at risk for dropping out. At the core of Check and Connect is that trusting relationship between the student and a mentor. And students are referred to Check and Connect when they show those warning signs of disengaging in school, and those are things like attendance, behavior, grades. Those are all the things we take a look at. So the check component is really the mentors are systematically monitoring student performance variables, as I mentioned. And then the connect is the mentors providing that personalized, timely intervention to help students solve problems, build skills. So it's really twofold. It's not only on academics, it's also that really important relationship building as well.
So just a little bit more on the mentors themselves. They are non-licensed staff that we hire specifically for this. And those mentors are partially paid through grant and partially paid through our general dollars. So those mentors are identifying, helping to identify students. You know, they're looking at that criteria. I'll talk about that criteria in the next slide. And they're meeting before school, during school, after school, so talking with those students and, you know, reviewing grades and how they're doing and how they're progressing and connecting with them. So when we look at the student profile, so we're looking at their discipline, you know, how many behavior referrals they have. Attendance and absences is a big piece, so that trueness, grades. And again, the focus for the Check and Connect program in the last few years has been six through 12. So as we look at the program, there's a number of factors. Again, we focus on the goals of the program and how we analyze the cost-effectiveness of it. of it. So, student behavior referrals, like I mentioned, you know, really looking at the profiles of the students and what our goals are in the program itself as far as improving for students, like attendance, dropout rates, credits. You know, we're talking about GPA and are they getting the credits they need? And then school completion rate, and of course, ultimately, costs. So, those are all the components that we're looking at, which correlate directly to what the goals of the program are. So, as I just explained, so there's the measurable data.
All right. So, let's take a look at our findings. We measured the data from the years 2014-15 and 2015-16. So, we looked over a two-year period of the program. So, looking at the absentee rate, the comparison from one year to the next, you can see we had a significant increase in absenteeism among the students identified for Check and Connect in grades six through eight. And we had about less than half of the same increase amongst Check and Connect students in grades nine through 12. However, at both schools, we saw an increase in absenteeism with students that fit the profile and were participating in the program. So, the next piece of data, this is behavior, measuring the behavior referrals and behavior incidences. Was there an increase or a decrease? So, from one year to the next, students in grades six through eight who were part of the Check and Connect program, we actually saw an increase in behavior referrals compared to the high-school students. We saw a decrease, about the same amount of decrease in behavior referrals among those students. Next, just for this slide, pay particular attention to the fractions of small decimals at the bottom. The bars look larger than they actually are. So, we're looking at a quarter of a number, of a numeral here. This was looking at the changes in GPA from one year to the next. We saw very slight decreases in GPA among the students participating in the program, slightly more at the middle-school, larger decrease than at the high-school. Lastly, graduation rate. Students participating in the program over the two years, 100% of the students did graduate. So, let's take a look at costs.
So, costs, remember, on previous slide, I mentioned that 50% comes out of grants and the 50% comes out of general dollars. So, you can see our 14-15 school year, and we go down, salary costs are the highest. As is mentioned earlier in the meeting, staff salaries are one of our biggest costs. So, then you have the training fees, admin costs. And the admin costs are indirect costs, and that's kind of terms used in academic return on investment, direct versus indirect. So, you know, a staff person that's dedicated to the program would be a direct cost. Someone that's supervising what they're doing, may not have meetings with them occasionally is more of an indirect cost. You can see the number of students that we had in 14-15, total of 62 students. And then based on those costs, what are costs per student? And you can see in the 15-16 that our cost per student was actually less, even though our staff costs ticked up a little bit and some of our other costs moved up a little bit, like the admin costs. And that was just because we had a few more students within the program in 15-16 than we did in the previous year. So, that economies of scale of having those students in there. So, that's just a note on why that number really is different or less. So, analysis and findings, you know, based on the academic achievement results of the study. So, you can see when we looked at the graphs and some of that data at the high school, we saw some goal areas being met. And at the middle-school, we saw no goal areas being met and at all at the middle-school. And in some of the areas, actually, the exact opposite of what we had hoped, where things were skyrocketing in the wrong direction.
So, the recommendations from the administrative team going forward into the 2017-18 school year, one would be to continue the Check and Connect program at Columbia Heights High School. The second recommendation would be to discontinue the Check and Connect program at Columbia Academy. And three, to provide alternative and more effective supports for the students in grades six through eight, something that will, where we will see the benefits. So, again, just as a reminder, this isn't a governance question, it's just simply to provide an updated information to the school board.
Do you have any data on the measurable areas before Check and Connect? So, like, did Check and Connect make things worse, do nothing, or still improve things even though they're not meeting the program goals?
We didn't look at that specifically. We just looked at our group of students in 14-15 and then the group of students in 15-16 and just compared those to see if, over time, if, you know, what the goals of the program of, you know, getting school or connecting with students, getting to stay in school, lowering behavior, increasing GPA, if those things actually happen. And so, our students from, in the Check and Connect, in the middle-school particularly, from 14-15 to 15-16, did not see a decrease in the habits of, you know, what we were seeing that they put them into this program because they fit into that criteria. So, that's what our specific goals were in this analysis, or looking at this analysis.
Yeah, there's, per the training on academic return on investment, there are a few different options in the design analysis, the design planning, where it's, when we're collecting the data. So, it's either, as you mentioned, kind of a pre and a post, or a growth from year to year. And so, we really targeted the growth from one year to the next.
Yep.
So, wasn't, was it the same group of kids that were followed from one year to the next?
It was the same profile of students. We followed the same profile of students.
And there were some of the same students.
Okay. I'd really be interested in seeing what those numbers were like with and without Check and Connect. Because, I mean, if this is just 50% of what it was like before Check and Connect, then that's still huge.
We had, if I may weigh in on that, we didn't do that because we had it at the high school, and it came in. And then it seemed like, well, if it's such a good idea, let's just put it in at the middle-school. And at that time, even the University of Minnesota was saying it was more of a, let's check in with our high-school students to see that they're on track to graduation. And so, we didn't look at it that way. But what we are looking at, and I think for us and for purposes of this, so we didn't look at it that way, we looked at what could middle-schoolers better, what could better support them? And so, what we're doing now is looking at, we weighed in with the building-level leadership teams, the social workers, the student services. And we, and it seemed like they needed more support in some of the other areas and some of the, with more social workers. Do you want to comment on some of the things that we're thinking about? And so, that's the direction we went because it was like, if we have a limited amount of money, particularly in a year when we were cutting so much, it's like, okay, if this really isn't working, let's find something for the middle-school that is working. In the elementaries, check-in, check-out seems to be working fine, great. But if it's not, what do they need more of? And do you want to just comment on what that might be?
Absolutely. So, instead of a brief check-in a few times a week, we're really looking at expanding to, well, one, we wrote a grant and were awarded an additional social worker at the middle-school. So, they will have two social workers, which we're really pleased about to be able to provide that additional support on that end of it. And then also, we are looking at piloting specific intervention classes where instead of a 90-minute intervention time, it would really be frequent small doses, frequent ongoing small doses. So, trying to hit that academic base, instead of checking in and saying, how are you doing? It's really, I know where, the teacher's saying, I know where you're at academically, and I know what you need in order to be successful in your math class. So, we're looking at, we call them skinnies, so 45 minutes and 45 minutes, within that 90-minute block of a literacy and a math support, plus that social-emotional support from a social worker. So, we really think that that would increase the overall support for the students and even expand our, you know, cast a wider swath and support more students.
Okay, yeah.
In addition, there's one more thing that, we're looking at what we're going to do with the SAT and perhaps expanding, this is in the planning and development stage. Do you want to talk about the aspire versus?
Sure. So, there's different pre-college assessments, right? So, the high-school kids have the option of taking the SAT or the ACT. And I know traditionally, or for many years, Minnesota's really been thought of as an ACT state. However, we did have the registrar from the University of Minnesota come, who had met with all of the Big Ten schools and other schools across the nation, who all accept the SAT exam. And so, with that and with our connection to the College Board through our advanced placement and our AP District of the Year award, we were, we learned about some of the programs that they offer. And so, students who take, the College Board, I guess, has partnered with Khan Academy, which is an online kind of supplemental learning tool for students. And so, students who take the pre-SAT or the PSAT, which, by the way, is a fraction of the cost compared to the ASPIRE test, which is kind of the pre-ACT test, which tripled in cost last year. Students who take that pre-SAT or the PSAT test will get like a learning locator number that they can plug right into the Khan Academy, and then they'll get individualized support for exactly what they need. And then also, within that same College Board-Khan Academy section, there are, I think, up to six additional practice tests for students as they go up and get closer to that 11th-grade assessment. So, we are, we're really looking at implementing that assessment at the, you know, kind of the eighth-grade year so that students can be identified with what their specific needs are, whether they're our highest-achieving students or students who may struggle, they would all get that individualized support. And this is a web-based, so it could be done in school or done at home or done at any time and at any place where there's Wi-Fi.
We'd also like to tie in so their parents can look at that as well. So, if they set goals at home, there's studies coming out, which we can talk at a later time, that say if you spend X amount of time doing this, it improves your scores overall. And I know that, Lorian, you had asked, how do we know if they're really going to be college and career-ready? We see this as supporting the pathways rather than just going back and just saying, how are we doing this week on this? So, going deeper and getting more structure for the middle-schoolers. And then as, we find that students get more focused on graduation as it becomes a reality in high school. And so, but parents are concerned about it along the way. So, would provide more support for parents, too.
So, this would be part of the structure that is going to be in the middle-school?
Yes.
So, Check and Connect is not just going to be pulled out, it's going to be replaced with something?
Yes.
Correct. And then when will that transition happen?
We're looking at this school year.
So, starting this school year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure it wasn't being removed without putting something else instead.
We actually have multiple measures that we're putting in. And in addition to that, we're still going to keep part of the counselor, that is the academic counselor as well, so that families have support, too. And then, of course, AVID is down there. So, yeah.
Very good. Thanks.
I have one other question regarding the results. Were there any allowances for the fact that in the 2015-16 figures that you had 11 more students? So, I mean, looking at that could sway some of the numbers as well.
Assuming it's averages?
No, that's what I'm asking, is it?
You know, I'd have to go back and I'd have to look at it and see because we did, there was a section of students that were pulled out because of data variables like what you're asking. And, I mean, I can get back to you on that, but off the top of my head, I don't know exactly, and I don't want to misspeak on it.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, and I, because I was looking, if you look at absenteeism, you know, in the middle-school, there's 185 more, but there was also five more kids. So, kind of, does that factor into that number or not?
It wasn't. For that particular one, it was an average.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's a tough dataset with 36 students. That's pretty, one student can skew that pretty hardcore, so. But I'm glad other things are coming up. Excited to hear.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is employee handbook. Being presented by Elizabeth Rushi.
Rushi, yeah.
You're always going to mispronounce at least one name tonight.
Oh, I'm used to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair Palmer, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board. I'm here tonight to present to you the 2017-2018 employee handbook. I'll take the next minute or so to highlight some of the changes that are really minimal changes this year. But the changes that were implemented were adding a section on customer service guidelines, guidelines and procedures. As you know, we've been making a push on customer service here in our district. Updating contact information. We had a few vendor changes that we needed to update in the employee handbook. We added some statute references for Minnesota sick leave law, clarified some procedures regarding reporting absences, and some of our standard changes. We have a new cover. We have to update the policies that the school board has revised throughout the school year and page numbers, table of contents, that sort of thing. The handbook was reviewed by our district attorney, Karen Keppel, and she's given us the go-ahead. This may seem procedural in nature, but our district attorney, Karen, has advised that the school board approves the handbook in the event there's legal action down the line. So, I will be bringing this to you on August 22nd for approval.
Any questions?
Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our Metro EXU membership. Hello again. How are you doing? It's been a while.
Vice Chair Palmer, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. I am here to present the Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit membership information. We just refer to it as Metro EXU. So, again, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And this presentation focuses on excellence and collaboration, and I'll add innovation without even having a star there. So, the Metropolitan Education Cooperative Service Unit has been around since 1976, helping schools to fulfill missions by delivering high-quality services while reducing costs through that collaborative partnership. So, some of the things that are offered are professional development in multiple areas, and I'll just add very high-quality professional development. They bring in incredible national speakers and also have local-led professional development. Support for our student services and special education. So, for example, we have worked with Metro EXU on assistive technology, which has been phenomenal, and some of our autism services as well. The Metropolitan Principals Academy is professional development targeted specifically for school leaders. The Praxis Para Pro Assessment, so for our educational assistance. And then there's also programs for students, which the overall umbrella is called Success Beyond the Classroom Programs. And then there's also district cooperative purchasing, which means we can purchase things at a much-reduced rate because of that collaboration. So, I'll just start by saying, two years ago, we were close to zero in all of these categories. We had very small participation. And so, we've made efforts over the last couple of years to say, if we're going to be a member of Metro EXU, we really want to have, get a value out of it. And so, as you can see, the numbers have really, this is our participation numbers, have really increased over the last two years, just looking at the different numbers of people participating in the Metro EXU offerings. So, how much is membership? They charge a flat rate of $700 for the district, plus 90 cents per pupil based on the October 1st counts. So, the fee for Columbia Heights Public Schools would be $3,678.10. So, this will be a governance question. I will be back on August 22nd to present the recommendation that the school board approve the membership for Metro EXU, again, for the amount of $3,678.10.
Questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is information from the Minnesota Department of Education Review and Comment. Mr. Holmgren.
Vice Chair Palmer, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, we are going to quickly go over the review and comment. This is actually the view and comment that the school district has presented to MDE for approval. Excuse me. Most of the information we're going to touch on is information that's already been presented to you as we went through the projects this spring, and then we came to a decision to actually go out for a bond referendum. So, on your, in your packet, move to page 169. And you're going to see that there's an introduction that talks about the safety, building security, space needs, the performing arts, and the site access that we need. and the site access that we need, you know, the amount that we want to bond for and so forth. Just gives the MDE, there's an overview of what we want to do. If we go to the next, move then to page 171. This is general information that MDE asked for, no matter what school the district is looking for approval, to get bond approval throughout and do a bond. So you see, we give them the geographic area, student population. If you move to 172, then you see, we let them know what kind of facilities we have, how old they are, how big they are, so they can get an idea of what our facilities look like. And then we move to page 163, really anticipated needs that we see for our facilities. Go on to 174, and then here's the actual construction project description. So you can see where we laid out North Park Elementary. You know, we're looking for library, media, arts lab, repurposed classrooms, so forth. These are all items that we had talked about earlier this spring. When we move a little farther through, then 176, you'll see that then the financing is there. And so what we're expecting it to cost, so they know what that is. Looked at 177, then there's a compliance document where the district is promising that we will go through all of these items. I mean, we have to follow the governing municipal contract statutes, sustainable design and so forth. This is something that every single district has to agree to before we get any type of approval from MDE. Now, if you move back into the appendices, you see now here's just backup information. So you can see that there's a map of the district. Then we have history of our enrollment, so you can see what's happening with our enrollment. I do apologize that a couple of these pages are, should be landscape and they're not. I asked for an updated version of this, and we didn't get it in time for a nice meeting. So you have to turn your head a little bit to look at a couple of those sheets. So I'm sorry about that. Anyway, then you'll see the financing runs, what we're going to borrow, and what's, what the total debt payoff and what years we expect that to happen. And then again, what the tax impact is for our community. Then you'll see in Appendix D, actually, most of the actual PowerPoint that we presented to the board. So you can see the pictures that we put in, showing them what we needed and why it's needed. There isn't a governance question on this, like I said. This has already been presented to MDE. They have 60 to 90 days to get it to us. They've been doing a pretty good job getting back within 60 days, so we expect something back from them the end of September. Then we will have to come back at a meeting and discuss the actual review and document that we received from MDE. Any questions?
Looks good. Looks very thorough.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up will be our long-term facilities maintenance plan.
What has happened? Our long-term maintenance facility plan is really, as we talked about this last couple of years, is our health and, old health and safety plan is morphed into a long-term facility plan. And what the state of Minnesota wants us to do is present the board with what we expect our 10-year budget to be for that. So if you go to page number 203 in your packet, you can see a 10-year expenditure plan that the Facilities Department has done. And really, what we've matched up is the 10-year facilities plan that we received. These are estimates at this point. But when you look at 2007 and 2008, these are pretty concrete. 2017, we just finished up. And 2018, of course, is our budget for next year. Just for an example, you go down, the top portion, the first numbers you see on the top, where it says finance, 347, those are the old health and safety pieces. So our physical hazards and environmental health and safety. These are numbers that we've been using for very many, many years. Really, it goes back to little things that we have got to take care of in our buildings on a yearly basis. And these are the numbers that we usually get on a yearly basis. When you get to the bottom, it starts to bounce around a little more depending what kind of project we're doing. So if you look under column 2018, and you see the second line there, Building Hardware and Equipment under 18, 602,000. Well, that's the big water project that we're doing over at the high school. So anyway, that gives you an idea of the expenditure side of that plan going forward. As we move to page 204. Now, these are the revenues that we expect. If you look about a third of the page down, it's actually, well, I don't know if the color came through on your, is yours in color? Okay. You see that the $1,643.40, that's what we expect. That's what we actually had on our levy last December. So that's the number that we levy. You see that going in 2008, the current estimate is actually, you know, 5,000 more. It's because it's based on some student counts. So that's why we see some of those levy adjustments when we get to December and talk about our levy. But that's why we see some of these adjustments, because we levy so far ahead that it changes by the time we get to it. So it's about, it's only $5,000. If you get to the next page then in the middle, then you'll see the breakdown between how much money that actually comes from the state of Minnesota and actually how much is our levy. So that's always nice, we see about a third of that money coming from the state of Minnesota. We're not actually levying that whole amount. So again, this is an estimate, but it is our budget going forward. And we just, we have to have the board approve this budget, which I'll bring at the last, at the next board meeting. And then that'll guarantee that we actually receive these funds. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next up will be the Northeast Metro 916 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance.
This is the same thing. In order to actually receive the funds, we, each school district that's a member of 916 has to pass a resolution saying, yes, we're going to go ahead and levy the portion that 916 needs. So if you look on page 207, you'll see here's a breakdown of each district and how much each district is going to be paying. They base this on a 50% utilization, 50% on your tax capacity. You see, we actually have quite a bit of utilization for the size of our district. You see, there are ADMs there at 88.63 with a total, the total here on the, under ADM at 28,000, and tax capacity at 11,000. So this is what will be included in the budget as, I'm not in the budget, I'm sorry, in the levy as we get to September. And then again, you'll see the final in December. Past that, on page 208, then you will see the actual resolution that we'll bring forward at the board meeting. And this resolution, of course, is we are agreeing that we would pay our portion through our levy to allow District 916 to take care of their buildings. Any questions on that?
This is nothing different than we've done in years past. This is just a...
No.
Okay.
Before, when it was a health and safety project, we had the same thing. We had a resolution that we passed, but it said health and safety. Now it says long-term facility maintenance.
Great.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you. Okay. Next up is the Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce Membership.
On this, on this one, we actually do have a governance question. And that governance question is going to be, you know, does the Board of Education of Columbia Heights want to continue our membership with the Chamber of Commerce? As we look at the last few years, we're starting to question whether we're getting really a value for that membership as the meeting that actually gets held in Columbia Heights every quarter, that doesn't cost anyone anything to go to. We don't have to be members to go to those meetings. So we can continue to access the Chamber in that way. And we haven't been advertising in their, in any of their documents. There are some other meetings that we've attended. But anyway, as a question for, I guess, the board to decide whether you want to keep the membership. The membership for this next year is $440, up about $20 from the year before. I guess, any other questions on that?
Does anybody have any questions?
Do you know what they use the money for? What does the membership dues go toward?
Well, there's a little piece they talk about. There's a technology piece. So I suppose the technology for running their office is there. And I suppose then their, and then their labor for their, you know, executive director, support staff and so forth.
Okay.
Is there anything that you feel that we are getting from a membership?
Well, I felt earlier that we had more of a, a better relationship with the Chamber years ago. I've attended, you know, a lot of the meetings. I go to most of the meetings. I'm there, I kind of observe. You know, we're not really asked for our input anymore. It's just, you know, they're a business organization, and we are not. And I'm saying, I think the, 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 the piece that we would get the most benefit from is the local meetings, which we can still attend. And we actually have a lot more say there. We actually go around the table and we can give an update. And it's very nice. So that we'll continue to do it. And we'll continue to go. And I think that's no problem.
The Chamber's gotten bigger over time. And, because I was reminiscing with Madam Chair here, that when I first got here, it was just Columbia Heights and Fridley in 1998. And so we'd get together and it would be more local. And now it takes in a big expanse. So as an admin team, we don't use it as much as a, as a board. If you think you want to be active and attend the meetings and maybe be on the board or something like that, that's entirely up to you. That's another whole thing. But for right now, I'm agreeing with Bill that the local meetings have been really beneficial to us. And they're still cozy, and they're still about what we're about. And if you're looking at your board budget, which this comes out of, there may be better ways for a year, suspend and see what happens. But that's entirely up to you on how active you want to be.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. Okay. Next up is Policy, First Reading. Number 303, Superintendent Selection. Number 405, Veterans' Preference. 414, Mandated Reporting of Child Neglect. And these policies will appear on a future agenda for approval. Just wondering if anybody has heard any comment about any of these. And if you have any comment, please contact a School Board member, and we will take that into advisement. Thank you. Okay. Next up, now we're on to action items. We didn't use the whole alphabet. We were certainly working on it. Okay. So the next item here is the Northeast Metro 916 Special Education and Related Staffing Agreement. And that will be presented by Marsha Walker. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Palmer, Board Members and Superintendent Kelly. Columbia Heights Public Schools is a member district of intermediate District 916. 916 serves approximately 4,000 students through shared programming that includes career and technical education, special education services and area learning centers. There are several staff in the Columbia Heights Public School System that are contracted through 916, including related service providers and specialists. 916 is able to provide contracted staff to Columbia Heights Public Schools that are often difficult to find or hire at a small FTE rate based on student need. So each year, the School Board signs an agreement for the provision of these staff and services. The governance question tonight is to ask for the Board's approval of the agreement for the provision of these staff and services through 916.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Discussion? I'd like to make a comment. These, being able to purchase, you know, a portion of these specialists,